Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for May 6, 2024. We have three items to report in our agenda items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the UC Denver GIS presentation. Item number two is Residential Waste Engagement Project Update. And item number three is the 2023 Board and Commission's Annual Report. We will begin our meeting, as we do most of our meetings, with a comment from the public. You may come and talk on any item that is on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. When I call your name, if you would please either unmute or come to the podium. I have no one signed up to speak in the hall tonight, but we do have one speaker that has signed up to join us online. Pardon me. Stu Stewart. Stu, if you are with us tonight, we are ready to hear your comment. If you would please unmute yourself, please give us your name. If you'd please spell your last name for us and let us know whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge and what agenda item you will be speaking to, then you'll have three minutes to address the council. Stu, are you there?
Certainly. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So my last name is Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-T. First name Michael, but everybody calls me Stu. I'm in District 2 here in Wheat Ridge, and so I do live here in Wheat Ridge. I actually didn't intend to comment, and so I just signed up because I saw that the Zoom link was available. And I'm an interested participant to follow along with this engagement that's happening for the trash hauling here in Wheat Ridge. And so at this point, I'll withhold any comments, but happy to follow along.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us. We hope you have an interesting, looking for an interesting conversation tonight. So thank you very much. With that, we will move to agenda item number one. This is the University of Colorado at Denver GIS presentation. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City No.
I think it's been passed to me.
Councilmember Amanda Weaver is going to announce this.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to announce it. This is super exciting, and I first want to say just how proud I am of all of these students that are graduating. And they're going to come up and do a presentation. They were asked by both Mary Ann and Lauren to think about ways of map-based decision-making around some other things other than just things are in need of repair with our 2J decisions. And so there were three themes that we looked at. Actual, the condition of actual infrastructure, demographic variables that would impact that or be impacted by that infrastructure. And then the last one, you can see that I had a pretty small class. Usually it's a little bit larger class. The last subject was trees in Wheat Ridge. And because Wheat Ridge Parks and Rec has a database called Treekeeper, and we thought it would be interesting to start thinking about what the trees in Wheat Ridge not only look like, but what kinds and types and how we think of that in terms of our infrastructure decisions as well. So the great thing, and I just want to remind everybody, since we are insiders in Wheat Ridge, they used fresh eyes to look and map these things. So I asked them to really dig in, and they know what we have before us as far as decision-making. And so I said, you know, let us know what you think. So I'm very excited. They're going to take over from here. Do they need mics?
Hello?
Okay, great. Well, without further ado, all of these students are going to present to us.
Hello, welcome and thank you for having us. We are graduate students at the University of Colorado Denver, and we are finishing our master's degrees in Applied Geography and Geospatial Science. My name is Vaz.
I'm Megan.
Erica.
I'm Hannah.
I'm Pat.
I'm Hori.
Tonight, we will be presenting our capstone project on map-based decision-making tools for the 2J initiative. As we go through our slides, we will be talking about and showing you maps on infrastructure, demographics, and tree canopy. I'm going to pass this off to Erica and Hannah. Sorry, Megan.
I'm just going to give you some brief background on our project and kind of how we went about everything. Yeah, Hannah, next slide. Oh, no. So essentially, our overall objective of all of the projects that we completed was to provide some additional decision-making support for the 2J initiative. And it was broken down into looking at three corridors, which included 32nd Ave, 38th Ave, and 44th Ave. And we separated it into three different projects. The first being the existing condition of bike lanes and pedestrian infrastructure. The second was the demographic factors that go into your decision-making regarding that infrastructure. And the third was the current tree canopy status of your open spaces. Now I will pass it along to Hannah and Erica. They'll talk about infrastructure.
Thanks, Megan. I'm going to scoot over here just to make sure we're on track. Can you advance to the next slide, please? Thank you. For the infrastructure component of our project, we developed a simple rating system to provide a high-level assessment of the usability of pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure. You know, really taking the perspective that I want to be able to push my kid in a stroller along the sidewalk to get to a bus stop or ride a bike with my kid to school without merging into traffic, looking at big-picture pieces of items or attributes of the infrastructure to make sure that it supports those activities. And to be clear, this is not an engineering study. We're GIS students, not engineers. But we hope that it supplements and complements the data that you have from the 2017 Bike and Ped Plan by providing a block-level assessment of what's missing or deficient and what's kind of okay for right now. We use imagery from the Denver Regional Council of Governments from 2020 to perform our analysis. We also drove along the corridors to confirm that the imagery is pretty much still consistent with what's on the ground today, except for right along Lottsworth. We're going to talk about our results for bike lanes and sidewalks tonight. We also looked at pedestrian crossings, but aren't talking about that tonight. All of this will be in our full report, and we'll share our spatial data files with you as well. Next slide, please. So before we jump into the results, we wanted to give a few examples of what we're talking about. So the first image you see is clearly a bad or missing sidewalk. That's on 38th near Oak Street. And next to that, there's a good sidewalk. This is Kipling, sorry, just west of Kipling, also on 38th. That sidewalk is at least four feet wide. There's a nice separation from the sidewalk, or excuse me, from the road. And you can move or roll along without encountering obstacles. Moving on to bike lanes, the first example shows a bad bike lane. This is a situation where there's a sign indicating a bike lane, but there's no actual infrastructure on the ground to support cyclists. Also on 38th near Parfett. And for full disclosure, this is in front of Councilmember Weaver's farm. And finally, further east on 38th, you have some pretty nice bike lanes. This is right across from the Wheat Ridge cyclory. You see that there are nice markings that clearly designate that this space is for cyclists, including dashed lines through the intersection. It's probably a little hard to see on the screen. I'm going to hand it over to Hannah now to start talking about our results.
So with that high-level assessment that we did for infrastructure across the city of Wheat Ridge, we looked at sidewalk quality across three major corridors. So we looked at 32nd Avenue, 38th Avenue, and 44th Avenue. And we created a rating system to rate the quality of those sidewalks. And we looked at both the north and the south sides of each of those corridors. Within our rating system, we wanted to look at whether the sidewalk was separated from the street, whether or not there was a curb, whether it was continuous across the segments that we designated, and whether or not it met minimum standards from the U.S. Access Board, which meant that it was wider than four feet. And we mapped these results. And as you can see from this map, we have ratings going from missing sidewalk all the way up to good sidewalk, and that's based on that rating system that we use. So where there are missing sidewalks, that means it didn't meet any of the criteria within our rating system. And where there were good sidewalks, it meant it met all of those criteria that we established. And if we look at some of the patterns that are on this map, we can see that there are more missing sidewalks along the western side of the city, whereas there are less on the eastern side. But along each of those corridors, there are segments and quite long segments where there are good sidewalks as well. And then with that as well, we wanted to look at safe routes to schools for children coming off of those three major corridors as well. And we looked at three schools in association with this. The first was Prospect Valley Elementary, the second was Everett Middle, and the third was Stevens Elementary. So we wanted to look at the most likely route a student would take from a major corridor to get to that school. And we used the same rating system and rated the east and the west sides of those three streets. And if we look at the patterns on this map, we can see that both Prospect Valley Elementary and Everett Middle have larger gaps where there are missing sidewalks. So students don't have that connectivity from the major corridors to their school, which might not be a safe route for them to get to school. Whereas Stevens Elementary has more fair sidewalks, which might not meet all of the criteria we established, but students still have access to a sidewalk. And with that, I'll pass it off to Erica to talk about the bicycle infrastructure piece.
Thanks. Okay. Our rating system for the bike lanes was quite straightforward. We essentially looked at are markings present? If so, are they, do they meet the minimum four-feet width that is established in your Bike Ped Plan? And then are they continuous? So as I'm sure you all know, there is a bike lane along the extent of 32nd Avenue. There are places on the south side of 32nd along Crown Hill Park and the cemetery where the bike lane width actually significantly narrows, and it varies quite a bit, to the extent where you would often have to merge with car traffic if you're riding east on the south side of that street. On 38th, as I mentioned before, there is a nice section of bike lane between Upham and Pierce with nice clear markings, four-feet-wide lanes, and continuous infrastructure for that short little segment. I do want to highlight the western segment of 38th. So starting just east of Young Field and continuing almost all the way to Kipling on the south side, there are signs indicating that that is a bike lane. There is a marked shoulder there, but per the Federal Highway Administration, a shoulder alone is not a bike facility. And I think it's really a safety issue that if someone were biking along, starting off in a segment of shoulder that is fairly wide, as you go east toward Kipling, the shoulder gets narrower and narrower, and you would find yourself being forced to merge with traffic in a section where there's no sidewalk as well. Definitely a bit of a safety issue there. Then 44th, you know, there's no bike lane there. So that's just a very quick, high-level overview of what's out there in the world right now. I'm going to hand it over to my colleagues to talk about some demographic data to provide a little bit more context.
Awesome. Thank you, Erica. I'm going to take your spot. Yeah, so Erica and Hannah just talked a little bit about the sort of infrastructure, what's actually currently on the ground in Wheat Ridge. What we're going to talk about here is demographics to give just some more data points to consider as you're considering where you're going to invest first. So just a quick introduction, what are demographics? Demographics are essentially any set of data that pertains to people within a certain geography. So the demographics that we're looking at here are all for the folks of Wheat Ridge. All of the data for the following maps that you're going to see are from the U.S. Census Bureau, which is the gold standard for demographic data in the United States. And it is all from the 2020 Decennial Census, which takes place every 10 years, or the American Community Survey, which is another survey that the Census does also in 2020, just to remain consistent. Yeah, so why consider Wheat Ridge demographics? We wanted to sort of approach this problem of connectivity for folks who might not have access to vehicles. And we were thinking about what are the sorts of people that would need, you know, sidewalks to walk to a bike, or not a bike, to a bus stop or to walk to school or to bike to school. And based on the research we did, we found that population density, distribution of low-income households, and vehicles per person are all pretty good indicators for the kinds of folks who will be heavily utilizing this infrastructure. That research will all be available to y'all in the report we get to you next or at the end of the week. I'm going to hand over the mic to Megan to talk about the first couple of maps.
Thank you, Pat. All right, so here we have our first demographic map. It is obviously of Wheat Ridge, broken down by district as well. It's population density. So where you see the darker red areas, for example, in District 1, right along 38th, that is a very high-density area. We did density by person per acre. So we broke it down by district. District 1 has the highest density of people with nine people per acre, whereas Districts 3 and 4 have about four people per acre. What's noticeable is that's more towards the western side of Wheat Ridge, whereas the more dense population is typically towards Denver in District 1 and District 2. To kind of further enhance this analysis, we wanted to take a look as well at the type of owners that are living in these areas, so renters versus homeowners. And we also broke that down by district. It was really interesting because District 3 is the only district that has more homeowners than renters. Districts 1, 2, and 4 all have more renters than homeowners, although District 1 and 2, it is very close. Next slide. So this slide is looking at what we consider to be low-income. We chose households that are reporting less than $25,000 in income per year. We intentionally chose this based on federal guidelines that say households of four people or more are considered low-income if they have less than $26,000 income per year. We chose $25,000 because that's how the Census breaks it down, and we wanted to be inclusive of households of four people or more. So again, where you see the darker areas, so the dark purple, there are a higher percentage of households in those areas that are reporting less than $25,000 of income per year. We also broke this down by district. So District 1 has the highest proportion of low-income housing with about 25% of the households reporting less than $25,000 of income per year. With that, I'm going to pass it along to Vaz, and she's going to talk a little bit about the comparisons.
Thank you, Megan. So the reasoning for putting these two maps together is because we realized there is value in putting these different maps side by side because it is more easy to see kind of where there might be more higher priorities in terms of the districts. So, you know, using the major corridors and the delineation of the districts, we are just showing y'all some areas that could benefit from funding first, such as a place in District 3 and District 4. And then we have the next map.
Yeah, this last map. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you all for your patience. So this last map is a little bit more experimental. It combines data points from the American Community Survey and the Decennial Census. Essentially, something we were thinking about as we were going through this process was who needs to use sidewalks and bike lanes? It's folks who don't have access to vehicles. So is there a way to sort of get a sense for, you know, where they're, where people might have more access to vehicles versus where they would have less access to vehicles? What we came up with this is this. So essentially, what you're looking at is a map of availability of private vehicles per person in each of these zones. So if you look up above District 4 there in that light zone, there is 0.7 cars per person. If you look down in the bottom of District 1, there is more than one car per person. What does that mean in actuality? So 0.7 cars per person, if you have a household of three people, that means that there are two cars for that household of three. So theoretically, you know, there is a, one of those people might not have access to a car at any given point. Obviously, this doesn't take into account, you know, children and other folks who are unable to drive, but it's just more of a map to give a sense of, you know, where are there, where is there more access to vehicles in the city of Wheat Ridge and where might there be less? And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Vaz.
Thank you much. So for the last part of our presentation, we are going to map out trees in Wheat Ridge. The reason why we did this is because it has been reported that trees in a city provides positive value to an area, especially on walkways, and has provides positives like connection to nature, improving the quality of the water and the air, and then also improving the visual landscape. So I'm going to pass this off to Hori because he made the map.
Thank you. I made this map, downloaded data from the Treekeeper database, and here it is clear that the distribution of the trees aligns with the population distribution. We can see in District 1, it has more trees, but in District 2, it has just like half of the total trees in District 1. And here I made a unique value color to show like different species and the count of trees distributed in this area. I will pass this to Megan to make a conclusion.
Thank you. So kind of our key takeaways from all of our projects combined. First is that there are clear areas of need for missing sidewalks and bike lanes. Considering demographics can really provide more nuance to your decision-making process. And the tree canopy can support stormwater management as well as improve pedestrian environments. And we just wanted to make note that though these projects were done separately, they were intended to be used in conjunction to make your final decisions regarding the 2J tax initiative. With that, we just want to thank you again so much for having us here today, and we should maybe have a few minutes for questions.
Terrific. Thank, pardon me, thank you very much. Great, great presentation. We'll go to questions. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the students. This is a great presentation, and I really appreciate the maps and the data that you put in them. I just want, have one question for clarification. When you were looking at bike lanes and sidewalks, was it, if it's on one side, then we consider that good? Like if it's a good sidewalk on one side of the street but nothing on the other side, do we consider that good?
Yeah, so we looked at both sides of the streets, so they have different ratings. So if on 38th, one side, the north side of 38th, had good sidewalk quality, that could have a different rating than the south side, which might have a missing sidewalk. It's difficult to see on the overview maps because there are a lot of individual segments that we rated, but in the report that we submit later, it'll be really clear, the north and south sides of each and each of those ratings.
Great, thank you very much for that.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for all your work on that. And Erica, it's fun to see you. I just want to call Erica out in part because I got to work with her back in 2014 when I first started working on the Live Well Initiative to really pay attention to bikes and pedestrian infrastructure here in Wheat Ridge. So it's fun to see you back up here, and thank you for your work. And thank all of you, guys. Erica probably knows, so I actually work professionally in bike and pedestrian advocacy and policy work, so I know how important these GIS studies are so that we understand, you know, what is actually, you know, on the ground, so to speak, and figuratively and literally. So I just want to, I don't really have any questions, but I was really struck looking at your presentation, just how closely aligned the data is with the projects that we're considering prioritizing. And so it just really helps because we have more need than we have funding, even with the bond initiative. But the additional layers of looking at the demographics and how that would impact people's access to the same quality of life in our community is really helpful. So I'm feeling good about what we're focusing on, so I really appreciate the additional insight in your work. Stuff like this really makes a difference in communities, and we hope all of you will come back in a couple of years and enjoy nice, long strolls down sidewalks in Wheat Ridge. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and great presentation. You guys did a great job on this, and I, most of what Counselor Holtein just said, I was going to say in probably not as good a way. But I think that it is really cool to see that your data does kind of jive with the projects that we have. My question was, have you seen the project list that we've kind of been looking at? And, no, okay, never mind. Well, I was going to say, maybe if you have, does it, how does it compare with maybe what you guys were thinking as you were doing this project?
We were taking a step back from everything and just looking at the raw data. So we didn't, we didn't have any preconceived notions of anything.
Okay, so, oh, it was totally blind.
Oh, cool.
I didn't let him see it.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, then it is really great to see how much it jives and that population data and all that stuff does work very well with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I'd like to commend all of you guys for really, the evidence of your hard work is there. You guys did a great job with this, and if you guys represent the future of urban planning, I think we're in all in very good hands. My question was on data sources, and I was a bit surprised to see the less than 25K per year in Districts 1 and overlapping on 38th, but the data is the data. And then on density, well, if you'd like to respond.
Yeah, I would just like to emphasize, all this data is from 2020, which I think we all know is a weird year. So there will be a little bit of a skew, and, you know, it's been four years. It doesn't necessarily represent how things are in Wheat Ridge now. It's more so just to give you a gist. All the demographics maps should be taken with a grain of salt, more so just to help you understand the patterns, less so than the raw numbers, if that makes sense.
Pat, could you also explain the block groups versus the district lines?
Yes.
Because I think that's what I'm hearing is, why did some of that data go over district line?
Totally. So if you take a look at the demographics maps, you'll notice that the areas that are shaded are, don't fit neatly within the boundaries of your shaded don't fit neatly within the boundaries of your districts or within the boundaries of Wheat Ridge. That has to do with census geographies. So the smallest units of census geography are the block, the block groups, the block group, and the tract. Blocks are really granular and great to work with. Most of this data was available at the block group level, and for the sake of consistency, we wanted it to, we sort of put everything in the block group level. So blocks line up really neatly with the boundaries of Wheat Ridge, block groups do not. So anything, any of those charts that are in there that specifically mention your district, that data has been calculated with blocks, so you can trust that that is specific to your district. The actual maps sort of bleed over the edge a little bit and are a little bit more regional. Does that answer your question?
No, it does make sense, and it always gets down to where you draw the lines, you know? And as you mentioned, the district maps, census maps, things don't always overlap. So that's where I think some of the professional judgment comes in, in determining how to present the data in a way that makes sense. The density for District Four, where I am from, does not include the northwest corner of the city, and if this data is pulled from 2020, it probably wouldn't reflect all of the new townhomes and that big giant apartment building that went out there. And that would, I would think, significantly raise the data, the density for that area.
Yeah, no, that's definitely correct, and thank you, Pat, for mentioning that. It's important that you know that. The reason that we chose 2020 specifically, it's because it's a decennial census, so it has the most information for us to look at demographics. And then we also took a look at population for that year as well, just to be consistent and not give you incorrect information.
Great. And just one more question that has to do with the tree count. And I wonder if there is a way to incorporate, oh, I don't even know how you would factor this out, but tree canopies provide a heat sink for a city where you've got the asphalt parking lots, and you've got trees, and how the, trees can help reduce the effect, the heat island effect. Is there a way that can be, that can be calculated into this study?
I don't really know how to like calculate the effects to mitigate the heat island from this, because there's lots and lots of information about the trees. And I think it's very difficult to calculate like a process, effects of how to mitigate the heat island, because like different species of trees. I just make like group, group all the species like from the genus skill, you know? So like, if we just calculate the effect of how to mitigate the heat island from one species, but it's very difficult to like, you know, there are lots of variables, like age, how the size of that, and like the species.
No, that makes sense, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and I want to jump in. Hori has done some really neat maps in the final project that think about species and age to get an idea of what trees will, we will need to replace based on that age, because we don't know the age of a tree, but we know the diameter and the species. And so, and there's also some really interesting, it's called hotspot mapping, that show an overall mass of trees in the different areas of Wheat Ridge. And so you all will have access to their more in-depth final projects. Obviously, we didn't have time to go into them here, so we'll make sure you get a copy of that.
That's great.
So I just wanted to call out that Hori's been doing some really neat analysis.
Again, thanks. You guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you. Councilor Ong.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Weaver, for bringing the students, and the students. This is a great project, looking at, you know, the sidewalks and definitely the trees I was really interested in. There's a lot of detail and all the different colors and trying to convey, you know, that kind of information. I think it's really important, you know, when I look at it, trying to figure out, you know, I know we need a lot more trees, and we're getting more trees, and that has a big effect on everybody, on the community. And District Two, one question I did have was, did you look at a per acre kind of analysis, you know, or square foot or per acre for the?
No, no, sorry. I haven't made that. But I used another analysis, like kernel density, like what's Dr. Weaver has mentioned, like if we just calculate the counts per acre, it doesn't show, like if we just specify one very small area, we cannot know the density, because like we have one term called MAUP. It's like when we modify the area, it shows like a different distribution. So I use a kernel density to show, I make this, write the rise the data to show the count of the trees. So you can see it in my final map.
Thank you. I know there's a lot of detail that goes into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all so much. This is great, really good info. 2Js is, it's an exciting prospect, and this is really helpful, so thank you. Two quick questions, and forgive me if you said this. How old is the data of the tree canopy? How old, like how recent is that? It's right now, this year? Okay, copy that. Thank you. And when will the report be due? When will we see the next iteration?
Our deadline is Friday, so at midnight, so you will presumably see it by Monday. I'm giving Amanda a deadline as well.
They're all graduating, so yeah, they will get them to me by Friday.
I don't mean to add to your stress. It's a stressful time, so good luck with everything. And yeah, really excited to see that, but this is great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sounds like there might be a diploma on the line, you know? Thank you very much for a great presentation and really, you know, sort of putting things in context, you know, the relationship between the maps, very interesting, so that we kind of get an overall feel for how, sort of the value and the equity that we can move forward with. So if there's no more questions, I'd like to say thank you very much to our panel.
Mayor, could we take a moment and just take some pictures with whoever would like to be up there? I've been asked by my department to take pictures.
Okay, we can, we're ready for the photo op. The photographers are ready.
And I also want to just thank both Lauren Michelak and Mary Ann Schilling for all of their help with this. Thank you.
The chart ones are harder.
Okay, we're going to move on to our agenda item number two. This is a discussion and an update on our residential waste engagement project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it right over to Mary Hester, our sustainability coordinator. She's going to introduce the team that is here with her.
Okay, Mary, take it away.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes, I'll just give a quick introduction. So good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for having us here tonight. We are here to give an update tonight on the residential waste engagement project, and the goal of this project is to better understand what residents think about the current waste management system and what they might think about some potential changes or alternative systems that we could move to in the future. And as just a quick reminder, this conversation began back in 2022 at a request from City Council, who ultimately ended up giving staff the direction to implement a robust community engagement effort around this topic to figure out what people are thinking. So staff selected HDR Engineering through a competitive process, and we kicked this project off last July. So we're a little bit over the halfway mark. We are expecting things to wrap up this fall, and the goal of the presentation tonight is to give you all an update on the project so far and the feedback that we have received to date. And then at the end, we'll also be asking for your input on some next steps for additional public engagement coming up here. And so we are joined here tonight by HDR Project Manager Tara, who's joining us virtually, and one of her other colleagues, Katie, also joining us virtually tonight, as well as Doug. And Tara and Katie are both a little under the weather tonight, so we thank you for joining us and still giving us your presentation. And with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Tara.
Great. Can you hear me okay, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, great. I am battling a little of bronchitis, so forgive me if I have to mute quickly, but appreciate the grace and understanding with joining you virtually. Happy Doug could be there. Doug is our HDR Global Lead for Waste Management on the engineering and planning side, so he's our technical advisor and our principal in charge for the effort. So I'm glad that he could be there to support with some of the technical questions. And Katie Angel, my colleague, we had a couple of events together last week, so I think that's where we might have contracted this illness, but she is online and has been helping with the day-to-day and is taking notes tonight. So moving to the next slide, we'll go through our agenda today. We're going to talk a little bit about the previous input that we've heard before our contract initiated, talk about what our outcome of this current effort is, some of the things that we've heard to date from stakeholder listening sessions, as well as our engagement that happened over the winter. And the most important and exciting part is for us to get your feedback on Phase Three surveys, so that's the next survey. That's really going to dive into more of the weeds of what we want to hear from the residents of Wheat Ridge regarding waste and waste management options. So to dive into the next slide of previous input, that happened in about 2020, as you all might recall, again, as the previous presentation had mentioned, a sort of a weird time. Lots of people were at home, so the input was maybe feeling a little bit different at that time, but it was part of the Let's Talk Resident Engagement program, and community surveys were conducted during that time, and the outcome really illuminated the need for additional engagement. We really wanted to get more details on the sentiments related to current waste management services in the city and what, where there might be potential short-term or long-term improvements. And that sort of helped create this next step. But some of the things on the next slide that we heard from that input particularly was that there were a large number of garbage trucks traveling through neighborhoods daily. Again, at that time, and based on when those surveys were happening, certainly they were felt a little bit more when we had our stay-at-home orders, but nonetheless, a critical thing of what we heard. Also, several collection services were causing some of the environmental impacts that are pretty prominent when we talk about hauling and waste management, so noise pollution, greenhouse gas, wear and tear on the roads, and unsafe traffic too, especially in some of those more dense neighborhoods. And all in all, there was really interest from our residents and the public to at least think about or wanting or leaning into a unified and more organized trash collection service, but not necessarily a specific option or a set of options in particular, in that the city should maybe think about a single-source provider or a city-regulated waste management system like some of your neighboring cities and cities around the country. But there still was enough information for staff in council to really make a decision at that point. And so came our project that we're engaged in now to really get some more information on exactly what people are feeling. So the project overview for this effort that we're in now is outlined on the next slide, and it really aims to understand the public's opinion about our current system in more detail than 2020 really dove into, and its potential for future changes in the city. So we wanted to not just use this as an educational opportunity about waste management options, but dig into more of the nitty-gritty of sentiment. And so the goals in more detail are outlined on this slide, and it really was to maximize resident engagement. In the previous presentation, we saw the map of how diverse the demographics are throughout the city, and our goal was to reach a broad spectrum of those residents and really encourage active participation from all corners of the community. We also wanted to make sure that the way people engage with us was inclusive and accessible, and so we had digital and in-person efforts. And one of the most critical parts of our effort, which is hard sometimes, because usually when we're doing engagement, we're promoting or we're really leaning into a particular decision that we're ambassadors for, but in this instance, we wanted to remain neutral. We really wanted to make sure that we were impartial while giving clear and unbiased information about waste and hauling options, so that we can give you the clearest picture of what your residents want moving forward. And that education piece, being informative of what those options are, will really help lean into the goal of deciding whether a decision should be made or what those short or long-term options could be. So moving on to our outcome, knowing that those are our goals, it's really to empower all of you at council to feel confident in providing direction on waste management decisions and approaches. And it's really important to remember that unbiased goal of ours as we move through the outcomes that we've heard thus far. And on the next slide, we talk a little bit more about those specific things that you're going to expect coming this fall. And the first, we've already been really diving into, and that's enacting a robust public engagement process to gather from as many Wheat Ridge residents as possible by way of that in-person and digital. So it was important that we meet people where they are through pop-up events and in-person open house events, but also to make sure that we have digital options as well. And using this feedback and the technical waste management best practices, which is why Doug is here, we could develop a set of recommendations on next steps. And it's important to remember that by your direction, by city council's direction, this effort is not to develop a final solution to waste management. So we really wanted to make sure that we were giving you a set of recommendations that can consider a lot of no-change scenarios. It could consider some short-term improvements or enhancements to the waste or waste diversion or recycling options within Wheat Ridge, or it could be a full overhaul. The recommendations are certainly not predetermined. We're going to continue to analyze those, but this final effort that we'll be going through will certainly not be a one-size-fits-all perfect solution as we move forward, but it will empower you to make the right decisions in a phased or long-term approach. So stakeholder listening sessions were part of our first phase of engagement, and some of the key takeaways from these particular groups, by way of small focus groups and one-on-ones, were as follows. So for sustainable Wheat Ridge, we needed a waste, we need a waste management system that is improved from the current open market, and that that is improved from the current open market, and that transparency and pricing structure is critical. From Sustainable Neighborhood Leaders, we heard a lot about the traffic and noise pollution issues and that a preferred hauler is, is a good compromise. And then, from our general community members who represented residents from across the city and different geographic areas, "Don't Take Away My Choice" was a really important theme that we heard throughout those. But that noise pollution was also an issue, excuse me, and they were also a little bit worried about a monopoly on trash hauling. So, you'll see kind of a different spectrum of input, which is why it's really important that we continue to dive into more detail. So, in December and through January, we launched our Phase Two Public Engagement, and here are the results to, to, to date on that effort. Nearly 700 people were reached and almost 900 comments received. HDR has done a number of city, county, and even statewide efforts similar to this, and these numbers for the size of Wheat Ridge are really impressive. And you'll see the map to the left, we're especially proud of, because we had that geographic dispersion across the city, so we weren't just seeing one pocket of the community providing input. We really were seeing that dispersion across the city, which was great. Getting into more details of what we heard, does the current system work well? So, a little bit of a truth test to what we'd asked in 2020. And what's interesting here is it's a pretty split vote, maybe shocking to some of you, maybe not, but 41% said no, the current system's not working well, 44 said yes, and this 15% saying indifferent is actually real, and I should say indifferent, not I'm different, but we're all a little different sometimes. But 50, if you, if you add up the 44 and the 15, that's really 56% or so of the folks who we've heard from are, are maybe thinking about a change. And so, that's an important topic. We'll talk about it just a minute. And what residents don't like about their current haulers? So, cost was, was a critical number-one issue about the current hauler, and then, lack of large item pickup. And close to, in third place is customer service. So, wanting that, that, that level of personal connection with their hauler, and then, lack of compost options. And lack of large item pickup and composting is going to be important as we talk about Phase Three in just a minute. So, in the next slide, another important element that we talked about was the most important, I guess, element of hauling or waste management regardless of, of system type, and cost was, in first place, this was based on a rate, a weighted score. So, the lowest score is actually the top, our most important element of, of waste management that residents wanted to highlight regardless of what system it is. So, cost was weighted, weighted the highest. Convenient and reliable service. Recycling options was top choice as well. So, it's showing that your residents are really leaning into that level of hauling and waste management. They're interested in diversion as it relates to recycling, which is an important aspect as we move forward. So, in a nutshell, to wrap up the three key takeaways from this effort, they even split between people in support of and in options, and in opposition to changing the city's waste system. So, that is important for you all to know as we go into this third, this Phase Three Survey, but also something that we'll consider as we develop the recommendations. The second takeaway is what I had just mentioned, that the split vote really indicates something interesting, too, though, that 56% may be interested in some change. Well, okay, what does that mean? A full change? A phased change? Are there elements of improvements or enhancements without changing the actual system? Those are the things that when we started to analyze this data, Doug and his team, along with Mary and Mary Ann, really bumped our heads together a lot to think about, what does that mean in terms of our next phase of questioning, so that we can give you the best set of recommendations? And the third takeaway on the next slide, choice and cost are the top two factors, no matter how we sliced and diced the data and the way we analyzed our open-ended comments from that second phase, cost and choice were, were two factors that were really of top value and important as we consider what changes to make. So, that brings us to this upcoming survey. And the purpose of this survey is to understand the preferred type, type of trash and recycling services in order to evaluate the cost, the cost impacts of potential future services as cost is the number-one priority for residents. This will build on the input collected from the first survey, which is really important. So, if we were going to change anything about this current system, this open-market system, we have to be sensitive that cost and choice are of top value to the community. And so, this is not a cost feasibility analysis. This is, that might be something that we recommend, but you'll see, or you have seen in the third Phase Three Survey, that we are starting to ask some of those cost-based questions. Considering curbside or drop-off collection, how does that, how do those feel to people? What's their sentiment related to that? Considering cost and choice, collection frequency as well was a top consideration. The questions will also highlight how fees may impact participation. So, if you've read those questions, what we want your feedback on tonight is, is the impact of participation in recycling or large item or composting services if there are fees or no fees? So, you'll see that as a pretty prominent set of questions. And then, seasonal participation, is that of interest to the public? So, we're really diving into the nitty-gritty of each of the hauling options that we showcased in Phase Two and starting to get into what people's day-to-day reaction would be to particular enhancements. So, the services evaluated thus far in this survey are recycling, yard waste specifically, and large item. But you'll remember earlier in the presentation, I had highlighted that compost. And when we, when we say compost primarily in this context is food waste, that was tied for three and something that people were not satisfied with their current service. So, one of the main questions as we dive into the next slide of feedback, and I'm jumping down just to that second bullet, but we would like your input on, on all of the questions, should food waste be included in, in the set of questions like we have for large item? But in general, now is the time we'd like to open it up if there are other clarifying questions to get feedback on this third survey, knowing what we've heard thus far. Is the purpose of the survey clear for the public? Does it make sense why we want to ask these questions? Should other services, like I said, include food waste? What other thoughts do you have? We don't want to launch this unless we've made sure that we're hitting the mark on, on what we should be asking considering what we've heard thus far. So, I'll pause, and we can have a facilitated question, and I certainly will try to answer the best I can, and we'll pick it to Doug, should it be of technical relevance.
Okay, thank you very much. Good presentation. We'll see if Council has some questions. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for your work on this. You know, I recognize that this particular project's hard, because we don't have a lot of, like, really standout data that is helping everybody know what to do. And, and, you know, I wear one hat as the liaison to Sustainable Wheat Ridge and know that there are a lot of passionate leaders in our community who really would like to see improvements to our waste management system in the city, because I, what I saw in one of the slides is across, you know, the three different demographics, that noise pollution was a shared concern. You know, people would like to see fewer trucks on the street. So, you know, wearing, wearing that hat, I, I think it's really important to, you know, if we're engaging in this, and I, you know, I heard when you presented to us at Sustainable Wheat Ridge, and I heard tonight that HDR is really trying to take a very, like, unbiased approach to this, but as a City Council member, I'm having a hard time seeing what, what we can do as a body to actually, you know, contemplate improvements. I know that there's a difference between changes and improvements in a system. And so, with one more round of surveying, I think it would be helpful for us to get a better sense of, of what improvements could be. And so, so in the presentation, so my thinking on this, and I realize I am not the consultant, I am the City Counselor, but, you know, we, we heard cost ranked number one, and yet, we heard it was also like the number-one concern people had. So, we're hearing both that people like the open market, because they think they're getting the best price, and the price that they're getting is something that they would like to improve and make less expensive. So, you know, that, so that's kind of, you know, that, like, that kind of counteracts, you know, those are two data points that don't, sort of, don't jive a little bit. But as a representative of my community, you know, I heard fewer trucks, and if cost is important, what are things we could do around cost, like pay-as-you-throw? I'd, I'd like to understand as a, as a policymaker, like, what are those things we heard were important that we could actually take some action on to improve the system for them? And so, yeah, so I, I, it would be helpful for me if this survey helped me better understand what are the policy options we can do to address costs, reduce trucks on the road, and, and then, the options around, like, the recycling and the, the, sorry, the large item and yard waste. So, to whatever extent we could get better data on that, I think would just be really helpful. But I do recognize we're getting, it's a lot of parsing things, and, and just really hoping by the time we're done with this, that we have a better understanding on what are some options that would have enough support that we, as a council body, can decide if we think our constituents would support taking some action, because right now, it's really hard to see what actions are, are on the table. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'd like to make very clear is that this, this entire study is looking at residential waste and not, small business, not commercial. And, and then, the other thing that, that, that kind of keeps hanging me up is this idea that half the people think we should change, and the other side of it is we should not. With the group in the middle, there's always that, I'm different, oh, I'm indifferent, that group is, is always going to be there. So, I understand why the, the data may say that we should consider that 44% plus the 15 means we should look into, how do we change things? But when I looked at some of the comments that came back or included in this report, one of the, the very first ones was, is, I don't know why the city's looking at this issue again. The issue was voted on, and anybody that's lived here for more than 15 years recalls the election that said they, the majority of the citizens in Wheat Ridge did not want to change the existing process. This, and, and they add on to that, the, the city's wasting time and money to do another survey, come up with recommendations that this person didn't think would, would reach any real conclusion. So, I guess my question is, given that, given the data you have so far, how, how can you slice that, or how can you dig further into the, 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 the real issue here, when you've got basically half the people saying yes and half saying no?
It's a, thank you, Counselor. Great question. Doug, I might lean on you for some examples of your work in other cities. But in, in a nutshell, what we're trying, what we've, because of that split, I think we, we all sort of were holding our breath a little bit on where that was going to sway, because of course, that's going to impact the next set of questions we ask, right? Which is why we've done this engagement in a phased approach. This third phase, I think, will dive into hitting the mark for all of the people, whether they said they want to change or not, but those who said, I don't want to change open market, but I still want recycling services, and they maybe currently don't, the questions in this future, in this upcoming survey will hopefully give some of that maybe short-term improvement or non-curbside-related improvements that could still satisfy some needs. So, Doug, it's essentially an example of recommendations, because I don't want to jump the gun before we get this other survey done, but it could be, and what we talked about with Sustainable Wheat Ridge was, are smaller changes over time without just changing the entire hauling or waste management system. For example, a semi-permanent, permanent, temporary composting events or locations of drop-off, yard waste, et cetera. So, Doug, you want to maybe dive into some scenarios where it's almost this phased approach of smaller enhancements, rather than just go to this particularly new option, when we know that the, the residents are split?
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, Tara, I'm, just real quick, I, I think Tara explained it pretty well. I think it's, we talked about baby steps, walk-before-you-run-type approach, and, you know, we went, I went to one of the open houses, and I heard those sentiments, as well as other sentiments of, why can't we be doing this, or why don't we have access to that? And so, I think we're trying to hone in a little bit more of what it could be, but like, not like wholesale change. So, I, I think, you know, there's a lot of different ways to approach it, and I think that's what we kind of would look at from a recommendation standpoint.
Thank you, Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I guess I would say I was not surprised at all by what we saw in it. I would, that's, you know, through speaking with people in our community, that's a lot of what we hear, right? Don't touch it. Why can't we change it right now? And, and for me, I've always been in, in the seat of, I think this needs to go to a vote, like, I don't think this is something that we, we change as a whole, as a body. I think it's something that our community gets to vote on. And so, for this, so, so the first time I read the draft for the Phase Three Survey, I was looking at it differently, like, okay, it looks like they're saying, okay, we're going to move forward and make some changes. How would you like to see those changes? And then, the second time I looked at it, I was like, actually, what I would like is, I looked at it through the lens of, this goes through a ballot initiative for our community to vote on. We need to know what they're going to vote on, right? It's not going to be a, do you want to change your trash service or not, right? They've already done that voting. We already have that information, right? It's going to be, do you want to change your trash service to this? It's going to have this, it's going to cost that, it's going to be that, it's going to be this, right? And so, then, that's, so they have all the information when they're voting. So, I would really like to make sure that this survey, in, in the setup, in the introduction, in the language, it doesn't sound so very, we're going to make, you know, we're going to make this change, here are some things you can give us some input on what the change will look like. I want it to look like, if this change was going to happen, what, what types of things would you like to see in this change? Because that information, to me, that information will, helps when we go to craft the ballot language. And I'm not saying it's going to go to a ballot, because of course, that goes to a vote of the body of eight of us, right? But I'm saying that that's the process that I'm supporting in this.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the counselors who spoke for me. I, I feel like in, in this case, and, and we kind of had this, and we did the NRS, too, on ADUs, like, no answer is kind of the answer on this. I, I think that because there's a split, the major actions either way are probably not where we want to go, but there's that play in the middle, that 15% or so, where they said they don't care, but I don't think that those people are real excited about making a big change. So, I, I think where we would go with that would be the minor changes. So, or, and, and I think what Counselor Holtein said is, is changes and improvements are two different things, so maybe phrasing that question in the survey, what kind of improvements would you like to see? And I, and I see, and, and maybe Counselor Hoppy and I kind of disagree on this, I, I did, well, no, we agree. This body should not make a very large change to, to our trash hauling, but the minor tweaks, small licensing things, you know, making sure that if they're going to do business in Wheat Ridge, maybe they're on certain days or certain licensing Ridge, maybe they're on certain days, or certain licensing things where they have to offer recycling, things like that, that stuff that we could do as a body here pretty easily, I think, and, and would really enhance the lives, the lives of the people in Wheat Ridge without destroying choice and all that, but making sure that there actually is competition and that they are living up to maybe a certain standard. That's something that we as a body can do pretty easily, and I think hopefully maybe the results of the survey might tell us where we need to craft that as we, as we move forward. Because I don't think, given what this data shows, this is going to end up on a ballot anytime soon, because I think it's going to be a massive loss, and I don't think it's something we want to deal with. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ohm.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, Doug and Tara, for that presentation. I felt like, I, I agree with some of my former council members that, I remember when that ballot question came out, and it was overly simplistic. And so, you know, it's like, "Do you want to turn the light switch on or off?" And it's like, eh, I'll just turn it off, because I don't know what I'm getting. And, and I think we do need to, we do need to be as reasonably detailed as we can, and it sounds like a lot of people, you know, they're 50/50 split, you know, I don't know which way it would, it would go. But I do know that all, everything that's in this report, you know, I think it resonates with everybody. Why do, why do you want to switch? You know, and they always talk about quality, and so we kind of keep going down that, that road of, if, you know, if I wanted, if I wanted to switch, you know, the first thing I look at is like, is there cost savings? And, and I don't know how you convey that in, in a ballot measure. You know, if you can put something on there like, "Well, we think it's going to be, you know, 10%," but it's got to be, that's got to be the type incentive to start with. And then, you know, I think the things that the, the city could definitely incentivize is, is definitely having that, I don't know if I'd call it regional, but some type of, you know, closer proximity of taking your compost or your, your boxes and everything to those types of facilities that Lakewood does. I think those are really big, big reasons that, you know, I would, that would help, I think, kind of help build that trust. But in the end, I, I think I tend to agree with a lot of council members, it's tough. This is a tough one, where everybody's kind of 50/50, and, and I think I, I probably like a lot of my constituents, you know, I, I look at, you know, just because somebody's the same price, that, that's not an automatic thing for me to switch. And even if it was a little lower, I'm not necessarily going to switch. I'm going to try to look at like, the reputation, and what else am I getting with all this before I decide? Because I know what I got, you know, it may not be the greatest thing, but I know what I got, and, and making that switch, it's a, it's a little bit of a leap of faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone's had a chance to speak. Councillor Holtein wants another bite at the apple?
Thanks. So a couple of things, so the ballot question was before I lived here, and just a reminder that more than 50% of our, our neighbors have lived here less than 10 years. And so the memory of some of that ballot question is not in the memory of the majority of the people who live in the city. It, so I agree with Corey, I mean, I, this isn't going to go to a ballot anytime soon, and I think that there probably are some small things that we as a body could contemplate. So understanding those better would be really helpful. I would really like to, next time we're talking about this, understand what options are that the community would support that would reduce the number of trucks on the road. I mean, I just saw that pretty consistently show up, and I realized it didn't rank quite as high in this last round, but in the first round and in the summary of the different constituent input, that was a consistent thing across there. And I also, you know, as, as we go into this third round, I think communicating that people's fears that we're going to be talking about a single haul or anytime soon, we can let them know that, like, we have heard that that option is not on the table. And I mention that because, you know, this is, for whatever reason, people like want to live or die over their trash collection, and it's the weirdest thing to me, that people feel so strongly, but people feel as strongly over here as they do over here. And so what we get are like, pretty focused lobbying voices, and to councillor Larson's point, and people are coming in, and they're like, "Change trash over my dead body." And then we have people who move in here who are like, "What is wrong? Why are there trash cans every day on my block?" So we really do have some extremes, and so I, I do feel like, you know, doing nothing doesn't make anything happy. And so if we could communicate that what we've heard is that these extremes are not on the table, so, so to alleviate people's need to feel like they're lobbying over their dead bodies for the thing that they feel the most strongly about, I think would be helpful to reflect back to the community that we've heard them. And so we're, we're trying to flesh out this middle a little bit better. Because I do think that we can, if we do this right, get some information that next fall, we could take a look at, because, you know, we're elected to improve the quality of life for our community as a whole. And, and there's nothing we're going to do that's going to make everybody happy, but I am confident that if we can better understand some of these things, and I really, again, I would very much like to see something that reduces the number of trucks on the road. I think we can do some stuff that, right now, with the city we have right now, we can improve, and, you know, at whatever time in the future, we can go back and maybe see where we are. But I don't know if that's more helpful to kind of take my, I was not quite coherent earlier, so my apologies.
Thank you. I wanted, it's, did I get a chance to talk there? I wanted to, I wanted to weigh in on this too, because I think this could be a, a pretty divisive issue for our community, and, and I think we need to look at that with, with clear eyes. I, I think that if, if we were able to sort of create more options for the middle ground, are there, are there some other creative thinking that we can do? Councillor Ohm mentioned that Lakewood has a pretty robust recycling program over at their, their yard on, on Quail, and, and that might be something that we could do. We might be able to, to generate some city resources that, that, you know, we've had success on citizens bringing their, their tree limbs and yard waste to a municipal-type facility, so maybe there's a role for that, for that to play together. So we might want to query some ideas around that. So I, I just wanted to, to open that up. And I understand we have a, a sort of a closing slide that, that gives us direction.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillors for the wonderful feedback. To talk about next steps we're here tonight, which is a critical milestone, again, we will incorporate your comments and recommendations. It sounds like for the most part, we're hitting the mark in terms of our questions, but as you sit with that over the next week or so, if you have any other feedback, please let us know, but we will take this feedback starting as early as tomorrow to start finalizing this survey with the hope to launch by the end of the month. We plan to have that open for the month of June, but in thinking about it this morning and preparing for this presentation, I might make recommendations to staff to extend that a little bit, so stay tuned for more, based on the, the summer timeframe and the events that we were planning to attend, which is our, our, our next step as well, to attend a pop-up event this summer, both to promote this Phase Three survey and continue to talk with our community about this effort. And then that final report and recommendations will come this fall, and that will include another briefing to you all, similar to tonight, on exactly what we're recommending. And I was sitting here nodding a lot as you were providing your thoughts and feedback, because you all are exactly right in terms of what you can expect to see. Again, we don't want to make too many final recommendations or decisions when we still have another survey, but in talking with Doug and the technical expertise, as well as what we're hearing from our community, and mashing that together in terms of best practices for waste management, looking at peer cities and how they're handling it, there are going to be some short-term, lower-hanging fruit, middle-hanging fruit, whatever you, whatever analogy you want to use, it will be in that report. And so I think you all will be satisfied in seeing there be some options that don't just go straight to a ballot or straight to a yes or no, or a light switch on or off. So we're confident that will give you something that you can really lean into and react to. And with that, I think councillor Holtein had mentioned earlier that we don't have the technical analysis, so there are feasibility studies and cost-benefit analysis and a number of other technical steps that will likely be recommended so that you can really make an informed decision, and should you go to ballot, that information is going to be really critical outside of just what the public sentiment is that this project is unveiling. So with that, thank you so much for the opportunity. Again, I appreciate you letting Katie and I join from our home offices. I'm grateful for the opportunity. So on behalf of HTR, thank you for your time.
Okay, Tara, thank you very much. A nice report, and I think we had a good discussion on this, and look forward to moving this down the road, Tara. We hope your throat feels better, and take care of it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you so much. And Mary, Mary Ann and Mary, thank you for, thank you for joining us. All right. With that, we will go to agenda item number three. This is a report on the 2023 Board and Commission Annual Report.
Thank you, mayor. This is our second round of updates from three of our board commissions. And Cole is, I think, getting his presentation up here, ready to go, but we do have some of our commission liaisons and some of our commission members here this evening, who are going to give us a, a two-hour presentation, I heard. No, no, three hour? Come on, Andy, no? So, all right, as soon as we get rolling here.
I see everybody nodding a lot.
All right, yes. Thank you, mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, again, to talk about our boards and commissions annual report, part two of that presentation. As you'll recall, this report was developed in response to council's request for increased communication with our city's public bodies at a previous meeting. So in response to that, we developed the annual report. It focuses on the achievements of our wonderful boards and commissions and public bodies here at the city of Wheat Ridge. Included in that report are details for nine different public bodies, and I just wanted to highlight here for a moment that, within those nine public bodies, we've got over 70 different volunteers serving on our public bodies. And that is just a tremendous amount of participation that we have from our community. And as was mentioned earlier, we've got some of those folks in the room tonight, I believe we might have some online as well. So this is really also our opportunity to say thank you to all of them. So tonight, we're going to be focusing on three of the nine public bodies that are in the report. First, we'll be hearing about the Election Commission from our deputy city clerk. Then we'll go to our Parks and Recreation Commission, led by the commission chair, Cambria, and Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec director. And then we'll move on to discuss the Cultural Commission with a presentation from Suzie Anderson, our recreation manager. With that, I'll hand this presentation over to our deputy city clerk, Margie Greer.
This will add here two hours. There's actually three slides. Easiest commission ever. It didn't meet last year. So the report will be short, but the Election Commission is mandated by your city charter. It develops procedures to establish proof of residency when it's in question regarding voter registration. They also determine the winner of an election by lot, in case there's a tie vote, and they advise on general voting matters. We didn't have a commission meeting last year, and probably won't as long as you keep coordinating with Jefferson County, which I suggest that you do. And last but not least, your current commission members are your city clerk, Steve Kirkpatrick. He's the chair, according to your charter, and you have two resident electors, Wanda Singh and Alisa White. Any questions?
Okay.
You guys can match me now for three minutes.
Thank you. Succinctly done.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. I think you all know me, I'm Karen O'Donnell, the director of Parks and Recreation. I serve as the staff liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission, but tonight you will hear from our chair, Cambria Rollo, and I would like to thank her both for her leadership and her willingness to present this evening.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you all for having me tonight. I am the Cambria Rollo, the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we have our vice chair, Andy as well. So you get to hear from him in a minute. So really, the mission of our Parks and Recreation Commission is to work directly with Karen, and to create a liaison between the community and the Parks and Recreation Department as a whole, make recommendations to the Parks and Recreation Department based on those conversations that we have, and to city council. So last year in 2023, we did provide feedback to the open space management plan, which was adopted by council in May, and we drafted a lot of letters for support, thanks to Brandon, and all of the various grant applications through the Parks and Recreation Department. We also participated in the Lead No Trace workshops, provided feedback on playgrounds, took part in the annual Wheat Ridge Parks tour, discussed capital project funding, and we represented the commission in multiple events across the city. And I will say that that's something that we're looking to do more of in the, in this coming year. So we are looking forward to planning and participating, rather, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update that's coming. And we do look forward to seeing numerous parks, projects coming to fruition over the next year. We will continue to support Brandon and all of his grant efforts, and we enjoy reviewing the results from the school of minds, so we're looking forward to seeing that coming as well, which was the fabulous presentation you all saw on 4/15. And then just overall, as a commission, trying to become more present in the community and accessible to our community, so that we can provide, or hear more from them, the feedback and input that they would like to provide to us, and what they'd like to see in our Parks and Recreation going forward. So with that, Andy, you want to jump up here and say hi?
My name's Andy Rasmussen, a commission member from District Four. I was initially brought onto the commission by request from my friend Val, who no longer serves on council, but there was, there was an opening, and there wasn't anybody applying. So Val called me and asked me if I would like to do it, and I said, "Sure." That was, man, I don't even know, that was like six years ago, or five or six years ago, I think, that that initially happened. And I, I very enjoyed, very much have enjoyed my time on the Parks and Recreation Commission. If you haven't served on a, a city commission, I highly recommend it. It's a great way of being involved in the community, meeting new people, keeping tabs on what's going on, getting to come here and talk to you fine folks. And I, I feel like I've been able to make a small difference in our wonderful community, you know, just by having some input on some of our parks projects and coming up with new ideas. We have some new, new blood on the Parks and Recreation Commission that I think is bringing in more new ideas, which I, I think is fantastic. And, yeah, sign up for a commission. Keep tabs on the, on the city website, What's Up Wheat Ridge always has, you know, openings for different commissions or committees that you can serve on, so keep an eye on it. It's a good time. Thank you. And then, I think we're looking for Christine. Can we, can we flip to Christine? She's, she was going to say something about being on the commission as well.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Awesome.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm Christine Salmonak, and I live in District Two, and as Andy said, I am also on the board. I, this is my, after one full year, and I've also really enjoyed being a part of the commission. I think that I feel more informed about what's going on in our community, and I feel more empowered to share my ideas and those of my neighbors to and from, to be able to best support the mission of Parks and Recreation. So just wanted to say hi, and all that good stuff, and I- So just wanted to say hi and all that good stuff. And I apologize that I couldn't be there in person tonight.
Thank you very much for joining us online. Do we have any questions from councillors about our Parks and Recreation Commission? It does a great job because we've got actually wonderful, wonderful parks in our city. I'll tell you, that's just one of the crown jewels that go on in Wheat Ridge.
And then I think next is Susan.
Hello, I am Suzie Anderson. I'm the Recreation Manager. And I am so glad that the cultural mission is so awesome and has done so many things because I have to fill up an hour and forty-five minutes.
You got some time.
Yes, yes. So I would like to just introduce Celia Daly. She is our Vice Chair. She's here this evening. And she will be speaking at the end a little bit about how she feels about being on the commission, but I would also like to invite her that if you would like to join in and add any information, please feel free. Our mission is the cultural commission works to promote artistic endeavors within the city by encouraging an appreciation for arts and culture, developing and recommending cultural programming to the city council, seeking community input and advice on the management of public arts with our Karen O'Donnell. This year, the cultural commission hired a firm to come in, a consultant to come in, and basically built three pillars for the cultural commission to follow. The first one is connectivity, looking to foster a sense of community, really bringing together different artists of the community to talk with each other and bring in ideas and how they can really kind of work as a group. And then just also staying up on the heartbeat of what's going on in the city when it comes to cultural arts. Our pillar two is community grant programs. So the commission has given out multiple grants. How many grants would you say? Yeah, so we're using part of the city funds that are allotted to the cultural commission to help the community that do things that have to do with culture, cultural arts, and allowing them to bring cultural arts to the community and supporting them financially in doing that. The third pillar is programs and partnerships. And really just, again, trying to bring together and partner with different agencies. The cultural commission has partnered with the City of Wheat Ridge with our Performance in the Parks and supporting us and have been to many of the events. If you guys have been there, you've probably seen them there. And they also have an art drop program, which is really cool. I don't know if you've ever seen that, but if you get involved in that, it's a lot of fun. We are made up of nine seats. We have two officers, our Chair, a Vice Chair. We have three pillar leads, and this is new this year as well, where we put one commissioner in charge of each pillar. And then I'm gonna jump to the junior commissioners, is what we call the junior commissioners. So those are the newer seats that have come on, and they basically jump underneath one of the pillar leads and learn how to run those pillars and what we do. So then when we have a switch over in commissioners, there's always somebody there that knows what they're doing each one of those pillars. And this is all just new this year, which is pretty cool. We've also added a communications lead. So we'd be in charge of making sure that the information on the website gets updated on a regular basis as well as some social media as well. Right now, we do have one vacant position, but as I said, Celia Daly is the Vice Chair. Kathleen Martel couldn't make it this evening. She's our Chair. Sandra Davis is the Communications Lead. Brendan Kelly and Beth Kelly are in the Connectivity Lead and Connectivity Junior Lead. Lindsay Burney and Jeff Richards are teaming up for the Community Grant Pillar Lead and Junior. And then Cecilia is also our Lead for Programs and Partnerships, and Kathy Plummer is joining her as her Junior. Twenty twenty-three achievements. So they, as I just spoke a lot about, finished up the three pillars, hiring that consultant. Not only did they help come up with the three pillars, they also came up with the roles and the responsibilities of each one of the leads and also helping with recruitment and succession planning, getting everything on paper. So as it gets passed on, we have this nice little pamphlet booklet to pass on, and it just keeps everything really nice and organized. Also, the Culture Commission Business Award was presented to the Wheat Ridge Theater Company this year. Art Centric and All Sacred Tattoo were runners up to that award. Twenty twenty-three achievements going on here. Sponsored and participated in Performance in the Parks, participated in Carnation Festival Parade, and sponsored the Festival Commander of Faith Design Contest, which they do every year. Hosted the inaugural connectivity event at Clancy's, which was really, really cool. They had over fifty creatives in the City of Wheat Ridge come together at Clancy's. And if they wanted to, they were able to talk a little bit about what they do. And these guys have come up with some really great ideas for our next one. So if you have a chance or if you're in the creative world and you wanna join them, please get that information. And then we also have a new little free library going in at the Active Adult Center, and the cultural commission was a part of choosing, selecting what the art would look like on the library. So I did during Closure Week at the Active Adult Center, go over there and watch the artist painting a little bit. And I think that's gonna be, gonna be up soon. So it's pretty cool there. Upcoming this year, lots of great stuff. So again, another winter and summer art drop program, ongoing sponsorships, pursuing opportunities to partner with Parks and Recreation, enhance the commission's social media presence and communication channels. So you can see by the upcoming expected achievement, it's following right along with those three pillars that they have now adopted. And at this time, I would like to invite Cecilia up to come out, Celia up.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm Cecilia Daly. I'm in District One, and I'm Vice Chair of the Culture Commission. I joined about three years ago, and at the time, the whole commission basically changed over. So we had sort of one person who stayed on, but they were gone probably by like June or July that year. So we were left with a commission of people who were sort of like, what do we do? Like, what is this commission? What are we supposed to do? And over the last three years, we've worked really hard, led by our Chair Kathleen Martel, who is a force, if you know her. And we've built these three pillars that really are designed, hopefully to be broad enough to be flexible as new people come into the commission, but also give a little bit of structure so that we know what we're doing and we can sort of use our time efficiently and wisely. So it's been really cool this year to kind of take all those ideas and distill them down into some areas that we've been really able to action on. It's been really cool to see it come to life. The Arts Drop has just grown in popularity this year. We had so many submissions. We had to turn people away, which is the first time we'd ever had to do that, and filled up both our winter and our summer drop in one call for art. So that was really cool. So it's been really awesome to see it grow, and thank you guys for making it possible. So thanks for having me.
I don't really have any questions. I just wanna recognize that you guys are just doing amazing work. I love that the kind of reinventing yourselves as you had such a substantial turnover, and I think it was just perfect timing because arts, it's just much more of a community-focused arts and cultural commission right now, and it's showing up. And I think it's really part of the story we wanna be telling about ourselves. I don't think I saw in the presentation that you oversaw a couple of pretty big commissions as part of our public art program this last year. I know that's.
Yeah, we did. And I wish that my commissioners were here who represented those. But yeah, we got to look at some of the submissions for, so the Clear Creek and some of the other areas where we're putting in big pieces of public art. And that was really fun to just kind of get to be a part of that, too, so.
Yeah, well, I just, I love how you're trying to touch a lot of different aspects of the community and doing it in a structured way. And I think it's really a model for our boards and commissions. So just kudos to everyone who's put in the extra work, not just to actually serve on the commission, but like restructure it and re-envision it. So it's looking good and looking forward to what's next.
Thank you. Pardon me, councillor Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I don't really have any questions either. I just wanna say thank you to everybody who came to present tonight. And a really big thank you to the seventy volunteers that we have on our different boards. And we really appreciate the time and effort you put into our community to make it a better place.
Any more questions for our Parks and Commission, or the Cultural Commission folks? Well, I wanna say thank you very much for coming and thank you for the work that you do and the members of your committee. And I know that I've had the privilege to sit on a couple of art selection committees, and it's really a wonderful experience, you know. So there's a lot of great things going on. So thank you very much for all you do. Okay, that will conclude sort of our reports. The next one would be our staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Nothing else from staff this evening. Thank you.
Okay, then we will go to elected officials' reports. Councillor Holtein.
Thank you. I will be quick. I know the Nuggets are playing, and we wanna go watch them soundly defeat the Timberwolves tonight. I actually have a couple of things. First of all, I spent, last week, I spent pretty much the entire day working with a team who was here to support our Safe Routes to Parks grant that we got. They had their national people in, and in the room, it was myself, councillor Ohm joined for a little bit. But we had people from the county and from the CDOT and from C D P H E and Parks and Wildlife, just a bunch of different partners. And we all got in the room together and spent an entire day trying to figure out how we, what we could do to do both short-term temporary improvements to the two locations that were identified for the grants, but also really trying to come up with long-term solutions to improve Miller Street between Forty-Fourth and the Frontage Road as well as Thirty-Second, really from, I don't know what, like, I think Dudley to all the way to Kipling. And it was just incredibly used to have everyone in the room at the same time. We were making really fast recommendations and decisions and trying to attach funding to it. So really great workshop. I appreciate everyone who worked on that, and it was really an honor to be part of it. Also, this last week, the National Civic League put out an announcement that Wheat Ridge is receiving a Lifetime Achievement Award. We will be doing a presentation on June seventh for the National Civic League's All-America City Awards V I P event the night before the actual competition starts, but we're being recognized for our good work, really focused on the Let's Talk program. And just, we should all really feel proud as a city, the work we're doing to really stay engaged and inclusive and really centering the dialogue between our community and our city to make everyone so we can all move forward together. As part of that, that dialogue, we really talk about being inclusive and taking a lot of different perspectives. And it, you know, after a conversation with a resident and a friend over the weekend, I was really thinking, actually, we were talking about the holiday celebration and how it is very Christmas-focused. And I'm wondering if this year, as part of our holiday, we could be more inclusive of other religions and consider having a menorah and maybe work with our idea committee on ways that we could expand what we're representing at our holiday celebration for when people are celebrating that time of year. And then lastly, Happiness Gardens. I'm really looking forward to going to the third regenerate, or fourth regenerate Wheat Ridge this Wednesday in the gardens. We're gonna be talking about bugs, and I can't wait. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items, and if you'll hang on one second, I'll get to the first one. And this last Tuesday, I attended, representing Wheat Ridge, at the annual Arvada Wheat Ridge Service Ambassadors for Youth event. It was the twenty-third annual recognition ceremony. There were twenty scholarship students and one hundred and twenty-five recognized students in this group, and each one of them is recognized individually. Quite a ceremony. The auditorium at West Arvada High School was filled, and there were lots of applause and clapping and cheering. And that was just from the kids that were recognized. But it was a wonderful event. I'm glad I went. And then on Thursday, May second, I attended the Wheat Ridge High School Senior Capstone Event as a judge. And after a nice dinner, we went to individual classrooms, and there were, myself and two other judges were treated to six presentations from six different seniors on their capstone project, something they've been working on for a very long time. You could tell they were very knowledgeable, and the presentations were all very professional. And I think it spoke well of our senior graduating class at Wheat Ridge High School this year. This week, on Wednesday, the C B R Connect at the Clear Creek Makerspace is a small business event. If you're interested in learning about some of the things, some of the opportunities for resources and whatnot available to businesses in Wheat Ridge, I suggest you attend that. It's this Wednesday at the Clear Creek Makerspace Facility, and it starts in the morning at eight-thirty. And then finally, a reminder that Ridge Fest this year will be at Anderson Park. That is scheduled for June twenty-ninth. And the folks at Local Works are looking for volunteers, so go to the Local Works webpage, and you can peruse the various volunteer opportunities because we always need some help at Ridge Fest, but it is worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any additional? Councillor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing was, is I wanted to say thank you to staff and everybody, councilmember Holtein, for the Safe Routes to Parks workshop. Councilmember Holtein was a wealth of information on grants. Really appreciated that. And then I attended the ribbon cutting at Little Brazil, District Two, and met the owner, Kayleen. And what a wonderful establishment and personality that she brought to that area. I was really amazed with how that restaurant looked and, you know, and they have live music on the weekends. They have a little grocery shop in there. I thought it was a really wonderful experience. And then I did wanna, as I was biking this last week, I noticed, I just wanna say thank you to the park staff. It's like, you see the park staff out there. They're cleaning up the graffiti, the signs, tidying up. They're getting everything ready for all our people to go and enjoy the parks and the trails, you know, and you can just kind of feel that little buzz, buzz of everybody doing that. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And then the last thing was, I wanted to say that we're having a District Two meeting at Happiness Gardens on Saturday, May eleventh, from ten to twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I enjoyed the ribbon cutting at Explore Forty-four on last week, whatever day it was. I can't remember what day it was. But it's great to see Forty-Fourth, I guess, get an official city brand. I know it's had one for quite a while, and the businesses have really worked hard to develop that. So hopefully, we can help them out down there. I also, I had to miss the two ribbon cuttings at Rolling Smoke and at Little Brazil. I was sad to do that. But I was teaching at Everett on Friday with several other community members and working with their wellness coordinator and doing a bunch of workshops with their students. And it was really cool to see Wheat Ridge Police Department there had a great, great presence, and they were doing several different workshops. And Officer Mallory was hanging out with me, working with the kids and doing some really cool stuff. So thank you to Everett, thank you to the community, and thank you to Wheat Ridge Police for all the hard work that they do as well. And several of us were able to attend the gala to support the Wheat Ridge Foundation last week and raise a little bit of money and support some of the Jeffco artists. And there are some amazing artists from all over, but best in show, Wheat Ridge High School. Thank you.
Okay. And councillors, anything else? Councillor Snell.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll be fast. So a couple of things. Number one, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And we should appreciate our teachers all the time, but specifically this week. So if there's a way that you can find to send a little extra love to teachers, it is the week to do that. I got to attend a breakfast last week for Habitat First Humanity where our Miller Homes, the project was featured. And it was, I mean, I don't think I ever attend a Habitat event without crying a little bit, just because it's just so moving because it is such an impactful, worthy organization, and the things that they do and the way that lives are changed through what they do is incredible. And so we are very lucky in Wheat Ridge to have that connection with Habitat. And some of the residents of the new Miller Homes were also at that breakfast, so it was really, really good time spent. So it was really, really good time spent. I got to attend also on Saturday, Jeffco Schools hosted their second annual Pride Prom. It was fantastic and I, kudos to Jeffco Schools for doing that and allowing students to have a safe, safe place to celebrate prom in an otherwise maybe not so welcoming environment. What else do I have? This Saturday, the 11th, there is an Indigenous plant sale at the Wheat Ridge Center for Music and Arts, AKA the Wheat Ridge United Methodist Church. Please come by, there's going to be lots of plants for sale, obviously, and also some vendors and dancers and it's going to be a great, great event. And lastly, if we're talking about events, District One has our, we have our District One meeting on the 15th of May, also at the Wheat Ridge United Methodist Church. Counselor Hoppe and I are hosting and we'll have some great information from the Lutheran Foundation and Intermountain Health and also some sustainability updates. That is all I've got. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any more elected officials? Before, you know, most of my thunder's already been taken, but I want to, I want to shout out to Director O'Donnell and a great Parks and Recreation staff for putting on a wonderful event on Arbor Day last Saturday, I think. We were out at Prospect Park and we were, I say we, you know, the people there were planting trees and really having, it looked like a great time and a lot of, a lot of rocks in the soils, they were really working pretty hard. But if you're not familiar with our park system that goes along Clear Creek, you need to get a map and go out there and start walking because from one end of our town to the other is just a marvelous experience to be outside and a great job there. Talk about ribbon cuttings. I'm thrilled to, to join the folks at Little Brazil. They've got a wonderful place at West End 38th, Rolling Smoke. Those guys have got a smoking deal going over there. They, they really know what they're doing with the barbecue. Happy to join Mayor Protem Stites and a group of other people to 44th Avenue to sort of kick that along. Was really pleased to be able to join many of, many of our counselors and staff for Jefferson Schools Auction, the two, at the Arvada Center this, this last week. Really, we had, we had, the two of the top award winners were high school students from our Wheat Ridge High School, wonderful young ladies that had really done great work, beautiful, beautiful work in, in being creative and just awesome to be, to be able to see the work that our young people are pulling out. So great, great to be there. Let's see. On Saturday, I'm going to have coffee with the mayor at Vanola's Restaurant at 9 o'clock. So if you want to come down and, and talk with the mayor and a lot of wonderful citizens will be at Vanola's Restaurant on 38th Avenue at 9 o'clock this Saturday. Is there any more business that we should conduct here? Mayor Protem Stites.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor. There was one more thing. The Wheat Ridge Education Coalition, which was our 2023 Council Partnership Award winner, has a, an event going on at Stevens Elementary on the Green this Saturday, 10 to 4. Ninja Nation is going to be there with a bunch of off-school course equipment and a bunch of cool stuff. Anybody who goes to Wheat Ridge area schools is invited to take part of that, especially if they took part in the bingo that has been going around. So thank you.
Okay. There's no more business to come before us. We'll stand adjourned and we will be back in this, in chambers at a regular meeting one week from tonight. So have a good week. We'll see you later.